I don't know, today is Monday, October 23rd. This is a special meeting of the School District of Waukesha Board of Education. Can I ask if the meeting has been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. We will begin tonight with a presentation and time for discussion of the 2023-24 budget proposal. And I'll hand that over to Mr. Clark.
Thank you.
Point of order, do we need a roll call?
Yes, we do. Thank you, David.
Ms. Canning?
Here.
Mr. Borowski?
Here.
Mr. McCaffrey?
Here.
Mr. Wad?
Here.
Mr. Zenobia?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Ms. Kozlowski?
Here.
Ms. Voight?
Here.
And Ms. Piasic.
Here. Thank you.
So after 11 months of work, we're ready to present to the board a final 23-24 budget and tax levy for your consideration tonight. So I thought I'd just walk through the main highlights because this is a lot of, this is a busy budget with a lot of things going on, most notably the approval of Phase III of the CIP and Fund 41, and trying to maximize the benefit with all of that work and staff stipends and all of those things. So I'll walk you through all of that. I'll touch on just a few of the highlights and some of the history that led us to being able to fund some of those projects, and then transition into tax levy and rate conversation. So I thought I'd start with, I guess, the thing that really drives our financial engine. Our third Friday counts. We did drop again this year. For about the last decade, we've dropped a little bit steadily following our projections. So we took that into consideration, not only, you know, at the count date, we had that feeling. We also knew there was a new charter school going in, but our projections have also been very steady. So it was part of our first assumptions adopted last December or January. So right now, resident pupil, and this is our count for the revenue limit, it's different than a headcount, is under 11,000 now, and back in 2012, we were at 13,143. So what seems like a small drop every year, you do it over 10 years, and it does add up. So the highlights of the 23-24 budget, and I'll just shoot through, there's about 10 bullets that I thought were worth mentioning. First of all, the most important one, we're in full compliance with the state of Wisconsin revenue limit legislation. We've continued our school site-based carryover program, meaning a school doesn't have to spend out their budget at the end of the year, they can roll over dollars to help them make better decisions rather than spending it down. 23-24, the final phases of approved ESSR projects, facility improvements, the HVAC work, and any learning materials that still may be out there, even though I think that's pretty well, well, it'll fall within this fiscal year. And we might have just a little bit, because you have until next September to spend all of ESSR III, so we might have some reporting that has to occur in the first couple of months of next fiscal year, but we hope to close it out this year. We've also included the operational savings from the sale of Lindholm and Randall Elementary. We've incorporated approved employee compensation and benefit plans. It also includes the elimination of a central office administration position, the continued defeesence or pre-funding of future Fund 39 long-term debt payments. We'll probably, we'll talk about that more on the levy side of this conversation. The budget includes the addition of eight special ed teaching FTE in the district, and it provides for the lowest K-12 tax rate, meaning, I didn't add up Arrowhead Sfeeters and Arrowhead, and they have a completely different structure, but any district that's K-12 provides us, from the information I've gotten from area business officials, because we're all adopting our final budgets and levies this week, more than likely, that we will come in with the lowest tax rate in Waukesha County. And it addresses several capital improvement projects, many of them that have been discussed for, you know, a solid period of time. The use of district reserves in this budget, this is the first time that we've really come out strong with a capital improvement plan, and one-time staff stipends, this is the second year for that, but the use of our reserves that we had built up during the pandemic. And of course, the first thing you learn in business manager school is reserves should be, only be spent on one-time expenditures, and I think we've followed that rule very well. So I went back, oddly, I ended up, I thought I'd never go there, but I ended up going back to our COVID-era slide decks that we did like in March or April. And the yellow one, the other two, I don't really need to touch on, but at that time, the board and the administration agreed that we would try to conserve as many dollars as we possibly could, because we didn't know what the future years would hold. We didn't know ESSR II, III, I don't think at that time ESSR I was even approved yet. But we knew we were in, well, first of all, we thought, the good old days, we thought we were coming back that next fall, and that ended up not being true. But there was so much unknown, we just really locked down at that time and did some things that area districts did not do. We did not pay vendors beyond what we were contractually obligated to do, mainly people transportation, the buses weren't running, we had to pay them for a certain number of days, but at that time, Patrick and I think Diane maybe was on the board at that time, we just held our ground with that. We furloughed 300 teaching assistant positions, which ended up, I think, benefiting everyone because once the unemployment $600 kicker went on the unemployment, I think the aides made out financially, and we saved a significant amount of money. I'm not aware of any other district in this area, and maybe statewide, that took that kind of step to conserve cash heading into what ended up being a two, two-and-a-half-year situation. So, you know, that graph looks great on my desk, but it doesn't come back as well. So the column that's going up, that's that year of 1920 where we saved all of these dollars at the end of the year through those actions I just spoke to. And our thought at the time was, for the next two years, with the economy tanks, school funding might tank, that we'd use those reserves to get us through the pandemic. And that was the thought, and that was the exact slide, even though it looked better in 2020. But as we, as we got going through ESSR, where all of a sudden, or through COVID, the ESSR funding started coming, and then our concern was, and it ended up to be true, with all these ESSR dollars arriving, the state of Wisconsin might opt out of funding schools for two years, and that's essentially what they did. And quite honestly, I understand the rationale behind that because of the volume of ESSR dollars that came forward. So we've been gathering fund balance and reserves through all of that, and now we're to a position where we hope that COVID's not driving decisions and conversations anymore. School funding has come back with the approval of the current biennial budget at the state level. So we're ready to make decisions about how can we better improve and reinvest in the district. But based on that rule I showed you at the front of this, one-time costs, you can't dump it into the salary scale or anything else that would just live on forever. You'd pay, truly, you'd pay for it forever. So the outcome of our approach to that, looking back, is, and we've gotten a lot of questions at the board level and at FNF, well, what are you doing with all that fund balance? Well, I'm here to answer that question now, but I think through a better lens than we would have had during COVID when we were still trying to figure everything out. So the budget as presented includes one-time stipends paid to staff. This is our second year of doing that. It fully funds CIP projects, and I listed the major ones, and they should be very familiar, they're part of the Phase III, pretty much all of it that you just approved. So South High School stadium, outside stadium bleachers and HVAC upgrades, the North tennis courts and HVAC upgrades at that campus, the West High School chiller replacements, auditorium upgrades at North, South, and West High School, district-wide camera and building security system upgrade. All these things, well, the camera system's underway as we speak, but most of these other projects won't be completed till next summer. So the total reinvestment in SDW from our actions going back to COVID is $15.75 million of projects that we hope to have done, as I mentioned, by the start of school year in '24-25. A very sizable reinvestment in the district. But one thing that does is it makes some of our budgets look like Fund 10's way deficit spending, because you're spending reserves. So when you look at those numbers in the book, it ties in with the narrative I'm sharing here. This was mentioned in an article this past week from the Journal Sentinel when they called and asked us about, you know, how did you, how did you fund all of these projects? So I'm taking pretty much my email, but I thought it's worth repeating that we are funding the vast majority, some of it is funded through the remaining ESSR dollars, and that's the HVAC work at North High School, but the rest of it's all from district reserves. No debt is being issued to fund these projects, and most importantly, no additional funding sources being asked of the, from SDW taxpayers. I don't know of another $15 million reinvestment in district that wasn't tied to a question or some feedback, so I think it's worth noting that here. Long-term referendum debt. Projected increase in the 23-24 levy includes continuing to pre-fund for SDW's long-term debt payments. We are on pace to either be debt-free, and when I say that, we'll still have debt, but we'll have the funds on hand to make the payments, we won't have to levy them. Just so people are clear on that. So we could be debt-free in two, meaning tonight, and next fall's levy, or one more after that, paying off the $60 million of debt that was approved in 2018 by the taxpayers of Waukesha School District. And when you compare that, so that would put us on a cycle of paying off or being in a position to pay off long-term debt in six to seven years, and then most districts, when they borrow sizable dollars like that, now granted, we're larger, so there's all, there's a scale to all this, right? They usually do 20-year bond issuance, so our amortization schedules, and we've avoided that, and it really started when the board in '19 pushed for me to do 10-year borrows. That was the whole, the whole start of this quick payback process. So I have on your debt-free SDW, it's really close, and we're the seventh-largest district in the state, $200 million budget. To be debt-free or that close is pretty unusual. And I think if you compare us to our neighbors in Waukesha County, we're one of the few that are within two years of being debt-free as well. So this gets into the defeesence question, so I'm kind of switching to the tax levy part of the conversation. And in your packet, the cover sheet is the summary, the budget adoption format, but the summary by fund, and then all the supporting informations in there, but the second page is the tax levy summary. And then I also gave you, we've been using this tax scenario sheet at FNF and sharing it within the board docs with the whole board, but going through different options, and we find ourselves in a nice position, I think, to be talking about how fast we want to pre-fund our debt payments. We're not dealing with a 10% levy increase just out of the gate because aid went down or, you know, taxing authority went way up. It's really kind of the art of the levy at this point. So last month, or earlier this month, at our last FNF meeting, PMA Financials came in, and I said, when you factor in, and I should go back, one of the things that's funny as I look back is you really didn't notice it happening, when we issued the debt, we issued it 45 million in bonds and 15 million in a bank, prepayable bank loan. The bank loan has long since been paid off, and the bonds now sit out there with a set amortization schedule, but when we got aggressive with refinancing and all of that and prepayments, early on in the process, interest rates were near zero. We were making no money on our money, and no one was, right? But now, so we were trying to get after principal, pay it off sooner, and we've saved the taxpayers, I think it's $1.8 million of interest expense during that time, but now rates have flipped. We're actually making money above and beyond what our interest rate on our bond issuance is. So with the defeesence now, and what PMA did in that analysis was say, all right, if we continue to defees and build up surplus to make future payments, how much interest are we making on that, that money that we could apply to debt payments? So it would be a tax cut, but you would never see it because we would never incur the expense, but it is a return to taxpayers as well. So the budget as it's presented tonight is based on Scenario B, and I've labeled them A, B, C across the top. So in conversations, and it's, it's like your mortgage, you know, do you want to push to pay it off fast, even though you might be making more money in the bank, and it's kind of your personal vision of time value of money? So I took the midpoint between the two scenarios. Actually, it's slightly lower than the midpoint because I, we were so close, I wanted it to be half the increase we talked about at the budget hearing. So at the budget hearing in September, a tax levy, even though it was there just to present to the public, to update them on where we might fall, a 5.76%, the final budget as presented comes in at 2.88%. The tax rate was at $6.01, and under Scenario B comes at $5.64. So that's how that all fits together. And what we're pushing for, for people who don't follow FNF and don't know what defeesence is, and first of all, defeesence is just pre-funding payments is all we're doing. This is why this conversation in my mind is going on, and again, I think it's healthy, just like I thought when the community gave us feedback after the 5.76 levy increase was just brought up as a topic. I thought that was constructive as well. But this is why we're, some people are pushing, and I, again, I don't think there's a bad scenario in all of this. This is our levy in '23-24, if one of the scenario, Africa, which one I used. The green is operational levy and Fund 41 levy, and then the yellow is what we levy for our debt. So if we went with Scenario A, we would levy tonight, the board would approve it, 23-24 levy, and again, I'm assuming everything stays the same over years, and it doesn't do that, but for the sake of this conversation. Then in '24-25, if we did the exact same thing and levied, again, in this case, and it's pretty much the same scenario under all these, we would have the same levy, but then in '25-26, we would have no levy, because we would have no debt, no levy for debt service purposes, and you would be looking at a 7% to 8% decrease in the levy, not the rate, but the levy. So now it's really a timing. Scenario C, you just lower those numbers a little bit, or shrink the yellow box, and you add another levy to '25-26, and there's where the step off would be. So again, the good news, and I hope what everyone, anyone who's watching this takes from this, is we're this close to being debt-free. And when that happens, you know, whether we stage it, and maybe it's a two-step down, drop down to a 7% or 8% decrease, or maybe we stay the status quo, again, I took B because I thought it melded all the ideas and thoughts that I had gotten in terms of feedback, and still provided short-term tax relief, but also kept us within the range where '24-25 could still possibly be our last debt service levy. So here's just some levy information. In the back of this booklet, and I have to laugh at myself, I successfully numbered page one, and then none of the other pages were numbered, so I've come a long way. I couldn't even used to do number one. There's a lot of 25-year history in the back, whether it's equalized valuation, or tax rate, or levy. It's, a lot of things have happened, I just said, well, what happened about, you know, 10, 15 years ago? The total levy that you're being presented tonight is 79.1 million. In 2009, 2010, the total levy was 86.3 million. It just shows, there's been a lot of building since then. But up above, I, those are, these are the numbers you'll see, the three-year average change in levy is negative 2.52%. Now granted, there was a, there's always a story behind numbers, right? There was a referendum that occurred in '19, but last year, we had a levy decrease of 10.2%. That helps your three-year average. But over the 10-year average, we've been fairly stable. Now, it's been some peaks and valleys in there, but I think it's important for people to know where we've been in terms of taxation and where we are today. So on the cover page of your packet is this slide here with the budget adoption format. Again, all the backup data is included in your packet. So we would be looking at a total expenditure budget of $232,445, and total revenue of And you'll note the expenditures outpaced revenue in Fund 10 and 41, and that's all those capital improvement projects that you've approved, and those dollars that we're pulling out of reserves. And then this is just a recap of the levy summary, which is on page two. This, I shrank it down a little more so it'd fit on the slide a little bit. So to summarize for levy, we're looking at a 2.88% levy increase, but with that, the benefit comes of paying off or pre-funding our debt a little quicker, saving interest costs in the long run, and increasing revenue, interest revenue on funds we're holding. And then the tax rate, and tax rate is, I was just telling Patrick, it's not hard to have a tax rate decrease when EAV's grown, 8, 10% increases every year. But the number is what it is, and this is the number that people will use to compare us to other school districts in the county especially. And then I recapped what happened last year, because people quickly forget, levy decreased 10.2%, and the rate decreased 20.4%. And here's the numbers I've gotten, I say near final because I think we're the first district to approve, or there's several of us more than likely tonight, and we will continue to have, we've always been at or near the bottom in terms of tax rate in Waukesha County, and we're on our way to being there. And just envision this chart two or three years from now when we no longer have debt. We will drop 7% or 8% further, so depending on EAV and all that, but, so that's a lot of information. Like I said, it's a busy budget, we've, we're looking to accomplish a lot this year, and I think we've encapsulated that into the document that's before you tonight.
Thank you, Darren. We have time for questions and discussion. Would anyone like to start? Mr. Wad?
Thank you for pulling this together. This is, I think, very encouraging news, especially the thought that we could be debt-free in a couple of years. I think that is a testament to the, the great fiscal management that this district has embarked on in recent years. A specific question I have centers around that reduction in state aid compared to what we had, I think, been estimated for us by the state. I know you and I spoke a little bit earlier today about that, and I know you had some questions out to DPI. Can you, for the benefit perhaps of other people as well that may be watching, explain why we're seeing less from the state than they may have initially estimated? And has DPI provided you a direct response to your questions?
Yeah, I did end up talking to them probably an hour after I talked to you today, David, and I was going to cover all that under the levy, but this is all one conversation with two action items tied to it. So what, what they told me, and it's kind of what I had heard, is there was a miscalculation of a very large district, very close to us along the lake, their shared costs last year, and mistakes happen and all that, I'm not here to say there was any hard blame on anybody at all. But what happened was their shared costs were over-reported, and if you have more shared costs, you lose aid. So last year, everyone else in the state got more money because this district got less because of this. And what they're, and I don't know if this is going elsewhere, but this was such a big district, you're talking $36 million of aid swing. They incurred their costs related to ESSR, but they didn't book the receivable. So the costs were incurred, and then the revenues were incurred the following year, so it didn't offset each other. That caused a spike in their shared costs, and then a valley the next year, because then the revenue hit. So this year, they owed MPS this aid, and to get that, they have to skim it from districts. So over time, I think we ended up where we should be. It just created this, you know, the adjustment, I have the aid calculation under the levy agenda item if you want to look at it. It was $850,000 for us, which was how far we were off from the July aid estimate, was $800 and some thousand dollars. So kudos to DPI, if it wasn't for the adjustment, we would have been within tens of thousands of dollars in hitting that. It just so happened you had this, and there's always adjustments, I mentioned this to David earlier, there's always aid adjustments every year, but normally, it's after you do the student count, the DPI continues to audit our counts, and sometimes there's, well, no, that kid's really a condom-walks kid, or right? So you'll get these small $10,000 adjustments, it's never $850 some thousand dollars. So we just kind of had a strange reporting thing with DPI. My only comment to DPI was, for districts that were impacted as much as we were, some sort of correspondence, clear correspondence would have been helpful, but I don't know the timing of them identifying this either, so, but that's the big thing. So that drove, we lost aid, so levy goes, has an inverse relationship, so levy came in higher. And then the other thing that's on the scenario sheet, those red lines, voucher participation and funding went up significantly, and we levy for that, and then our build at the end of the year for the expense side of it is no new revenue for us, but it does put upward pressure on the local tax levy. So that was different, sure.
Anyone else? On the voucher pass-through piece of note for me was just that in the last three years, that line item has doubled. So whether we are serving students in our facilities or in our virtual school, or whether we're serving them in a different environment, we still have that obligation to serve students in our, in our boundaries. So, but that, that was of note to me, that that's a pretty significant change in the last three cycles.
I had thought, or my thinking on this is, like open enrollment or programs, any choice program, that they, or homeless, you know, teaching from home, and they kind of mature at some point, and you don't get those big jumps, and I still think that's going to happen, I just, I don't know, now I don't know when. You would think after three to five years, you kind of identified that, but maybe this isn't the case for this one.
Well, I think it's important to remember when we look at the enrollment numbers as a, as a flat number, it's, it's not the same as students served, and so we have to levy for resources for the students, whether they're in our programs or whether they're choicing into another program, so.
And that, and that information is not available to us.
Correct.
DPI just supplies you with this number in the less revenue limit calculation, so.
Yeah. And I think that's the challenge with all this, that I've learned over the last few years, a lot of the data comes in at the end, and then you just kind of have to play all the cards that you have. I appreciate the thoughtfulness that went into understanding what we could do with the defeesence in order to kind of balance the equation of it for taxpayers. So last year, we ran into this 10% down, which was really nice to have, was a result of a number of factors, but we didn't have a lot of control over how to manage that number, other than potentially accelerating defeesence, which wouldn't have been appropriate in that situation. So now we're faced with trying to right the ship on that, and I think, from my perspective, coming in in the middle is kind of splitting the difference between maintaining the ability to earn some interest on what we've actually got in the account, and allowing constituents to keep some of that money in their own pocket. So I think that's a nice compromise. There's no question that costs are going up, but with respect to school finances... There's no question that costs are going up, but with respect to school finances, we really are limited by the revenue limit authority that we have, plus, I guess it is nice to have the variable where we can work with the defeasance a bit. And obviously, we don't want to kick this can too far down the road, but I think this is a nice way of kind of easing into being debt-free, but taking advantage of that opportunity that we have this year when we have some of the surprises that I think we weren't expecting with the aid and the vouchers. Anybody else have questions or comments? All right. So in terms of our order of business, the next item on the agenda would be to consider a possible action regarding the budget approval, and just to kind of lay things out in terms of what will happen then, the next, if we are able to approve a budget recommendation, then we would take action regarding how those dollars would actually fall into the different accounts, funds, I should say. So would anyone be interested in making a motion?
And usually, the motion's as simple as total revenues and expenditures, because I forgot.
I see someone might be ready.
I motion to approve the budget as presented with the revenues and expenditures.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the 2023-2024 budget proposal, including expenditures and revenues as presented, and we'll need a roll call.
Ms. Kozlowski?
Aye.
Mr. Wad?
Aye.
Ms. Kaining?
Aye.
May I, for one second, can I clarify, when you say as presented, is the Scenario B?
Correct, as recommended.
Okay. I apologize for jumping in, I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page, so.
I was going to ask.
Scenario B. Could we restart the roll call, please?
Sure. Ms. Kozlowski?
Aye.
Mr. Wad?
Aye.
Ms. Kaining?
Aye.
Mr. McCaffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Voight?
Aye.
Mr. Borowski?
Aye.
Mr. Zanobia?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
And Ms. Piasic.
Aye. Passes nine-zero. All right, the next order of business is to consider action regarding operational capital expansion, debt service, and community service tax levy. And that would actually be found also on the front page of the proposal. Correct, Darren?
Yeah, the tax levy summary's on page two, if you want to see it, it's in board docs as well. So it's calling for a levy increase of 2.88% and a tax rate of $5.64, which is a 5.5% drop from last year.
Any questions about that?
No questions. Do you make a motion?
Mr. McCaffrey? Sure.
And approval of the 2023-2024 operational capital expansion, debt service, and community service tax levies.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Kozlowski. Any further questions? All right, Darren, would you go ahead with the roll call, please?
Mr. Zanobia?
Aye.
Mr. McCaffrey?
Aye.
Ms. Kozlowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Borowski?
Aye.
Ms. Voight?
Aye.
Ms. Kaining?
Aye.
Mr. Wad?
Aye.
And Ms. Piasic.
Aye. Passes nine-zero. That concludes all of our business for this evening. With that, we're adjourned. Thank you.